All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order and I will ask Ms. Howe to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and welcome. Next item on the agenda is the consideration of the agenda, anything that needs to move or be added or deleted from the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which contains routine matters that typically do not require board discussion. Individual board members may remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate action. And tonight's consent agenda items are as follows. Approval of the minutes from our last regular board meeting held February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Approval of various personnel recommendations. Accepting donations totaling fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and eighteen cents. And approval of bill vouchers, EP register, EFT vouchers and Capital One entries as listed in the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're running with a skeletal crew here tonight, so. That's right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, we'll move on to the superintendent's report on excellence, Dr. Fletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, I have a number of pieces of good news on students. First sophomore Eliza Botson Johnson's amazing ceramic artwork entitled "So Sweet" won top honors at the National Council on Education for Ceramic Arts K-12 Exhibition. Eliza's piece was selected among thousands of entries across the country and will be featured this month at the NCECA Annual Conference. So congratulations to Eliza and special thanks to Orno High School art teacher Jane Hudgens. Good news on boys swim and dive team. They competed in the state tournament earlier this month and placed eighth overall. In the championship final, the following Orno swimmers placed in the top ten. Walter Royal placed both fifth in the one hundred yard butterfly and eighth in the two hundred yard freestyle. Owen Gagny placed eighth in the one hundred yard breaststroke. Nick Fogel earned ninth place in diving. Four swimmers placed sixth in the two hundred yard metal relay. Kayden Starzinski, Owen Gagny, John Fort and Walter Royal. Boys basketball, also good news, they won their section final against Hutchinson on Saturday. Semi-final, I'm sorry, yes, semi-final against, it's just advanced wish thinking. On Saturday to advance to the section final game on Thursday. March seventeenth against Mount Westhunka, so good luck to our boys, please come cheer them on. Just a reminder to the community that nominations are due March twenty-eighth for the Orno Alumni Association, both Promising Alumni and Distinguished Alumni Awards. This is a prestigious awards program that honors the achievements of Orno High School graduates. And details and applications are available on the Orno Foundation website. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Great, thank you. Next we'll move on to board members' questions and comments, an opportunity for board members to update each other on committee meetings and other items of mutual interest. Start with Ms. Howe tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have nothing to report.
Okay, that was quick. Mr. Bash?
Well, you'll see the the results of most of my activity later in the meeting. Both the Finance and Facilities Committee met as well as the Policy Committee. One note on the Policy Committee that, we have a correction that we'll talk about later, but one of the things that Martha and I would like to recommend to the board is, as we've looked at the schedule for this, if you remember the superintendent's goals for the year said, implied a complete policy review. And Martha and I believe if we get through the four hundred series, we're doing three hundred series stuff tonight. If we get through at least a first reading of the four hundred series by the end of the school year, we believe that that will be successful completion of the goal, the work that that we've been able to do and what the staff has done. We believe that's a
Realistic.
realistic goal, and so we want to make sure that that's clear now, not on June thirtieth or something, that we want to make that very clear, that we're very happy with the progress we're making. The staff has done a phenomenal job on walking us through this and had some really good discussions on these policies. And so, but we just want to make that very clear, that that, we feel pretty strongly about that. And if you don't get it from Jim's report later on the finance stuff, one of the things that became very evident again, not that we, not was surprised, again, how important the renewal of the tech levy could be. And one of the things that you'll see here, and we debated on what the right word is, whether it's subsidization or cannibalization. But you can see how far the tech spending goes beyond the tech levy. Where we're spending out of other accounts and groups to support essential technology and textbooks in the district that maybe we, you know, we think the tech levy and the covers all the textbooks and technology, it doesn't. And what we'll see in the presentation later is how big that subsidy is and again, how important it is that we get that renewed this winter. And that's the end of my report.
If not expanded, yes.
If not expanded.
Right. To cover hopefully some more of that gap. Thank you very much, Ms. Wallander?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I was able to attend an Orno Early Learning Parent Meeting and they are back in gear. They're doing a lot of work on their backyard area, which is their outdoor classroom. They're planning for a cleanup, actually the day after Earth Day, so it's very well timed on the twenty-third. They're going to be inviting community members. And they're actually going to be looking to form a group that's the friends of the backyard. So they're going to be looking at anybody who might be interested in gardening or helping with maintenance back there. And just an aside, how they are using that room is very much in line with our science standards that were presented to us not that long ago. The kids are out there, they're creating, they're modeling, they're doing all of these very interesting hands-on things. So I feel like what they are doing, starting there, is really very well aligned with what they will be doing once they hit the K through twelve scenes, so kudos to them on that work, thank you.
Thank you. And I don't believe I have anything else to add, so we'll move on to next item on the agenda, which is old business. And that is consideration for action tonight on a number of the two hundred level policies that were presented for first reading at our last meeting. Anybody want to give a little background on that or make a motion that we approve those?
We have one, we need to take one word out.
Yes, the two hundred series is really about the status of school board. And on policy two oh six and section, it would be six C. The first paragraph, line three, we would like to remove the word or. That is the only change that you would have in your packet for action tonight on the entire, there are six policies in the two hundred series.
So I'd like to move, based on our second reading, that we approve Board Policy two oh one, two oh six, two oh eight, two oh nine, two eleven and two fourteen.
With the wrong correction?
With a correction.
Okay. Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Not, I will call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Again, our thanks to the Policy Committee for their excellent work in reviewing our policies.
Just so you, this is, this is the four hundreds that we're going to try to get done by the end of the school year.
Understood, I previously served at the Policy Committee and know full well how dense they are and how much time it takes to really thoughtfully consider them, so thank you very much. Any other old business that needs to come before the meeting? If not, we'll move on to new business, which is more policies, this time for our first reading of policies three oh one through three oh six. Dr. Fletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I invite Dr. Aaron Ruland, Executive Director of District Administration and Management and Operations, as well as the role of, the governance role of the school board. Included in the board's role is the selection and evaluation of the superintendent, so these policies provide guidance on that. And then finally, Policy three oh six details the Administrator Code of Ethics, which includes standards defined in statute primarily. We would assure the board and our community that our administration adheres to the highest standards of ethics, character and integrity in all we do. So we present you this policy series with very minor changes and assure you that we are well in compliance with these and have the highest standards in our work in this area.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Fletcher. The budget process is very fluid, isn't it? It seems like you just approved the current budget that we're in and wrapped up in audits, so. I'll make a few remarks, I would like to thank Mike Bash and the other members of the Finance Committee who discussed several of these items at a meeting last week. And Dr. Fletcher and her team actually looked at a number of these items, including enrollment and staffing and various items as well. So, as you know, on an annual basis, the school board needs to approve a budget or we can't begin our operations in the subsequent year. And our fiscal year goes from July first through June thirtieth. However, a portion of our budget is financed by property tax levies, which go through January through December. So we actually began the budgeting process with the approval of the property tax levy that occurred in December, so. And you probably recall that we also have our long-term facility maintenance budget, which was already approved as well. So this evening, I'm going to ask the board for consideration to approve two components of our budget. And these two components are for our capital items and for our technology. And these two items typically require a little bit of lead time so that we can get the purchase orders put together and make sure that we receive the products that we're seeking to have in time for the start of the next school year. So this is probably not something new, this is included in an excerpt from prior budget books. But basically, it shows a little bit about the budget timeline. And as I mentioned, it's typically an eighteen-month cycle, although our long-term facility maintenance plan is a ten-year cycle. And congratulations, this summer we're set to pretty much wrap up the major portion of that with the Discovery Center improvements. And then of course, we have our operating capital budget and then our technology budget. So a couple of things I'd like to mention, the legislature actually passed a biennium bill last year. So we do know what our basic formula allowance is. You probably recall last year that you did not know what kind of revenue you were going to expect. And so you actually had to set a budget using assumptions, even on the revenue per student that you would receive for students. You're probably also aware that our Legislative Action Committee has met with legislators and Dr. Fletcher has done that as well. And we're hopeful that the legislature will give consideration to some additional needs that have been identified by the school districts. So we won't have the answer for that, but that's one of the reasons why we started our planning now. And then hopefully, if there are other remedies for some of the additional needs, financial remedies from the legislature, we receive those resources. Enrollment drives our budget, so you'll probably see that in our revenue assumptions as well as our expenditure assumptions, it is very important to talk about our enrollment. And I'd like to mention that our enrollment at the secondary level is as strong as it's ever been. And our enrollment at the elementary level is rebounding, so we're very happy to see that. And that's a statewide phenomenon, probably even a nationwide phenomenon. I think there were a lot of families that maybe redshirted their kindergarten students and wanted them to not enter the school system until some of the pandemic-related items were completed, so. But if you look at our, if we look at our enrollment, you'll see that we're anticipating sixty-five additional students from the enrollment that we currently have this year. And we're pretty well on track to return back into that trajectory. So Dr. Fletcher and the team actually talked a little bit about this being a reset. So we're resetting our enrollment to be post-pandemic or hopefully endemic, because I think that's what the word is now, so. And we can get on with business, the business, the important work of serving our students and our families. So I've got that information in here. And then two other things I'd like to mention is the Operating Referendum, which is voter-approved. We're in the sixth year of the voter-approved Operating Referendum that was approved by voters in two thousand seventeen, so we still have quite a bit of stability with that. And we do not have the ability to add to that at this point. So we are at the state required cap for that. And then there's some other items that are included in here as well. One thing that we want to keep in mind is that some of the federal stimulus dollars, or I shouldn't call them stimulus, federal ESSR dollars, for lack of a better word, using their terms, will be used over the summer to provide some additional academic remedies for families that may need additional supports. And then those funds will start to trickle off and then be gone after this year, or after the next year. So with that, just a couple of items to mention, we have expenditure assumptions. Anytime we have actual information on an expense, we use that actual information as we assemble the budget. Other times, we have to make assumptions, and so there are a number of assumptions that we'll make, but we'll continually monitor the budget until we have a really good number for those assumptions. And a couple other things, we do have certain budgets where we allocate a certain amount of dollars to be used. And then in some cases, we allocate, I guess I would call it an allowance. The prime example would be fuel. We set aside so much of our budget for heating, and if we don't meet that budget, we come in under budget. So we're typically pretty conservative when we do those allowances to make sure that you don't see me before you next year saying, hey, we got to keep the heat on? Could you appropriate another twenty-five thousand dollars for the month of March? So, so those are my remarks. I'd like you to make any remarks if you'd like at this point.
I think we were, we discussed an administrative team, just significant pleasure that we see the enrollment bouncing back, but also knowing that at the elementary, we, we have some reset to do with enrollment. And at the secondary level, it looks exactly pre-pandemic. And we don't know where we'll start by the beginning of the school year. But at this point, as we start looking at staffing, we always staff to enrollment.
Yep, and I would like to make another remark, even though I'm up here doing this presentation, there are a large number of people in the budgeting process, so I want to make sure that we acknowledge the full leadership team of the district and the program managers.
And we just add my personal thanks to Mr. Westrom, who has been a wealth of information and help as we've navigated the school year.
Thank you. So no action is required on this item, but the two other budgets that I'd like to present, we can go through those rather quickly because they're pretty familiar to you, I would imagine. And we would like you to give consideration to approval. So the first item is Agenda Item eight C. And I'm going to make remarks regarding the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three operating capital budget and then recommend board approval as proposed. So, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure, do you call the, or do I just do the presentation? Terrific, okay. So our operating capital budget is included on page forty-six. And what I did is I included the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two budget, a projected budget for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and just gave you a little peek ahead to twenty-three, twenty-four. In this revenue formula, most of the money, or actually all of the money, is formula-driven. It's based on the number of peoples that the district serves and also the age and square footage of the district's building. The lease levy component is based on approved leases. And those leases, actually one of those leases is set to be paid off here over the next two years. And so those dollars can only be used to pay for the leases. And the leases are for those facilities that we use, that it was deemed more important or more prudent to lease those facilities or to finance facilities of our own instead of to actually go out and create our own facilities.
So the list is, we rent a hockey arena. We have the lease levy that actually financed the original turf and the track stadium. Also gymnastics. And there's one more that I can't think of.
There is some hockey. The bus garage is in here as well. A portion. Yep. And in all cases, as Mr. Bash had indicated, those were very prudent decisions and purposeful decisions to maximize and leverage taxpayer dollars.
So it's the stadium?
It's the stadium that runs off next year, yep. That was originally a fifteen-year project, so.
And I'll also mention that we also are paying for old Crystal Bay Road improvements, so that is included in here and that'll get paid off in two thousand twenty-six. So one thing that came out of the Finance Committee meeting is we thought it would be important, you probably noticed, a number of items are highlighted in yellow. Those items highlighted in yellow are actually technology-related expenditures. So when we look at the tech knowledge levy coming up, it's one point two million dollars of revenue that we received that was approved by the voters. And we also need to give consideration to these items that are highlighted in yellow. Technology doesn't run itself, you do need to have a system administrator. And so that's the, that's some of the salary and benefits that are included in this portion. Regardless of whether the district had a technology levy or not, the history prior to the technology levy is that we had someone coded through this operating capital to do that. You'll probably also notice that we have some non-instructional software. School districts have to pay a number of license fees, and so that's where you're seeing some of that. And then you'll see that we have an allowance for textbooks and workbooks. So that is led up by Dr. Ruland and his team, but basically, to continually improve in the curriculum, we set aside resources for that. And that was originally included in the two thousand one technology levy and in the two thousand eleven technology levy renewal. And then lastly, we have another eighty-five thousand dollars worth of non-instructional technology software. But in total, you'll notice that I'd like to concentrate on the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget. For the most part, we're almost totally balanced. We've got one million two, two hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars in revenue. And that includes a hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer from the general fund, which has been the tradition. Even our capital funds aren't adequate to fully fund the capital needs identified in the district on an annual basis. And then you'll see the expenditures are only in two hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. So those are the two numbers that you'll approve this evening.
And as when we talked about it at this committee, the challenge is, I mean, this is sort of really arcane fund transfer stuff, but we're paying out of this, which we're, I mean, state statute lets us do, but we're paying for technology and textbooks out of this levy because there's not enough in the other one. And that's, that's the cross-subsidated cannibalization that's going on, is that we're, we're not able to do other things that we can do here because we need the technology and the textbooks here.
And does the transfer from the general fund, does that sort of end up being a plug at the end of the year based on what we spent? Or is it, one could be a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, actually, that's just to make up the shortfall. So for instance, this year, if we don't use the entire appropriated balance, we'll leave that money in the general fund. The general fund has the most flexibility for the board.
It looks like that's what happened in this current year, right?
Yes. That is correct. Yeah, and just if you're comparing twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three is pretty much a reset again. We took advantage of the fact that we could get as many high school improvements done over the last two years. So you probably were that we accelerated some of those projects that were due to be slated a couple of years down the road.
So. Any questions on the operating capital budget as proposed?
Jim, let me just ask you, would it, and I don't care how, would it be helpful if you went through the, the technology levy and then we just kind of, since they're sort of interrelated, if you just sort of went this and then we voted on both of them?
I think that, I think that's a really good. Yep, so let's go ahead and do that, if you're comfortable with that. We'll go to the technology levy budget, and that'll actually allow me to make another remark. So the legislature has given boards the ability to levy the operating capital budget, and they've actually provided some state aid, so they call that equalization. That's one of the strengths of the operating capital budget, even though it's not adequate. It is given to the school boards without needing to seek voter approval. The technology levy budget, for some reason, twenty or more years ago, the legislature felt it was necessary to connect with the public and actually have the voters approve a technology levy. I'm not going to try to, try to figure out why they did that, but I do believe that you probably have seen some districts that have very large technology levies. And I think the Orno School District has been very prudent and has looked at trying to maximize the dollars that it does receive through voter approval and not seeking to do anything that would be out of the ordinary, just absolutely necessary. However, because of, the technology levy was originally approved in two thousand one and renewed in two thousand eleven, and technology continues to grow and evolve in the classroom, of course. It's just become to the point where we need to use some money from the general, from the operating capital as well. So let's go into the details of the technology levy. The revenues that we were proposing for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three were approved by the board, actually in December, when you approve the local property tax levy. Technology levies, or at least for Orno, are not equalized, so it's a hundred percent local effort. And perhaps maybe that's one of the reasons why the legislature felt it was important for boards to connect with their community and seek approval or reapproval. And you'll see that our expenses are budgeted to be at the exact same dollar amount. And once again, we've got some allowances in here. So if we don't expend all those dollars, those will carry over into the future. But if we do need those dollars, we'll expend those now. Because if you look at the past, there have been times when we have grown the fund balance just a little bit. And part of that is because a number of our technology projects occur over the summer months. And our fiscal year goes from July through June, but our technology work goes June, July and August. Just a couple of things to point out, the biggest portion of the technology levy are the fixed costs associated with servicing the technology. That would be the, the actual staff that provide the support to students and to staff and keep everything running. So those salary and benefits work out to be about forty-two percent of the technology levy and another eleven percent for a total of fifty-three percent of our budget is fixed. So once again, I'm assuming Mr. Bash will probably make some remarks, but it's real critical that we realize that these fixed costs probably will not go away if the funding source goes away. And there's only so many different buckets of money available in the district. Contracted services would be those actual fees, maybe internet access, et cetera, that we need to continue to subscribe to.
Those aren't going away.
Huh?
Those aren't going away.
Those are not going away, if we shut those off, we're isolated out on the Orno campus, so. And then our supplies and capital budget. I will just mention that the capital budget typically is our replacement cycle. So you're probably aware that certain technology becomes obsolete and is no longer supported. And so we do have a replacement cycle, although it's not an aggressive replacement cycle. So with that, keep us.
And that's, and that's capital not only for technology that the staff uses, but also the technology that supports, I mean, that the students use.
That is correct.
We're supplying the iPads and the Chromebooks and that type of stuff directly for students.
Yes, that is correct. And it also includes the routers and the hardware.
So that's the, that's the boring stuff that nobody gets to see, or the technology that you have at your desk or a teacher has at their desk, nobody sees that. But they do see the technology that the students have in their hands, and that's what this is helping to pay for.
But it's, that technology is where a lot of the learning occurs within.
Yeah. So it's very similar to like the plumbing or the electrical wiring throughout the district, that you take it for granted, but it is necessary.
And just to be clear, our current technology levy funds us through December, is that correct? Or is it through the school year?
Well, we receive it in, in May of this year.
It's this budget right here is the last.
Yeah, no, I know that, I'm just wondering when it. Yeah, no, I, I know that, I'm just wondering when it cuts off, if it gets us through the entire year or only partway through the year.
Yep, it, it will get us through the entire fiscal year, July first, two thousand twenty-two through.
But then, then it ends if we don't renew it.
That is correct, yep. So thank you for seeking that clarity.
And it's, and I, I could have mentioned it earlier, but just, I. When we talk about, this is not technology related, but it'll talk about one of the pressures that we're seeing. One of the other things that we talked about at the finance committee meeting was our bus contract is expiring this coming summer. And we've all seen the signs up that says, you know, thousands of dollars of signing bonuses and big pay increases. And we see what gas costs, not surprisingly, the bus company has come back with very large. Proposed increases, now, Jim's going to work hard to, to mitigate those, but those, those increases are far in excess of what we're going to get in. In state aid increases, so, again, there's, again, not, it doesn't specifically relate to technology, but. It's the importance again of how important this levy is, because if this goes away, it's one more thing that's going to be competing for those same. Um, dollars that are out there.
All right, any other questions, comments, otherwise, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the operating capital budget first. Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not, I would call the question, all those in favor say aye, aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and now we will entertain a motion to approve the proposed technology levy budget.
So moved.
All right, and is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, aye, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you very much, Mr. Westrom.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all your work. All right. So I don't believe there is any other new business to come before the meeting, but I could be wrong about that, anybody have any new business? Other than what we've already discussed, not, I would, uh, point your attention to the informational items in our packet. Including the enrollment figures, uh, as of March first, and, uh, let you know that our next regular meeting will be held. Monday, April eleventh, uh, seven P M. back in the district office assembly room, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye, aye, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you.